Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. It's a little bit after 8:30 in the morning, and we will start by roll call. Rod, would you please take the roll?
Good morning. On the attendance roll call, Commissioners Wooden.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Sparks.
President.
Ponstein.
Here.
Beckler.
Here.
Oliver King.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Coleman. Hildenbrand.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Vice Chair Green.
Here.
Commissioners Diaz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Earl.
Here.
Boujack.
President.
Breevy.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Chair Steck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much for the invocation. I will call on Commissioner or Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Good morning. I thought this morning it would be appropriate for us to pray this prayer before an election from the Conference of Catholic Bishops, so let's pray. Lord God, as the election approaches, we seek to better understand the issues and concerns that confront our city, state, and country, and how the gospel compels us to respond as faithful citizens in our community. We ask for eyes that are free from blindness so that we might see each other as brothers and sisters, one and equal in dignity, especially those who are victims of abuse and violence, deceit, and poverty. We ask for ears that will hear the cries of children unborn and those abandoned, men and women oppressed because of race or creed, religion or gender. We ask for minds and hearts that are open to hearing the voice of leaders who will bring us closer to your kingdom. We pray for discernment, so that we may choose leaders who hear your word, live your love, and keep in the ways of your truth as they follow in the steps of Jesus and his apostles, and guide us to your kingdom of justice and peace. We ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, and through the power of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. For our first special order of business, I would like to ask Melissa Denson and Nicholas Young to join us at the podium.
Well, good morning. It is always a pleasure to honor some of our very hard-working employees who achieve great things for Kent County. And first this morning, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Melissa Denson. So we're here to recognize Melissa Denson from the Kent County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, who was selected as one of our quality service employees for the third quarter. The coworker who nominated Melissa for providing high-quality service to our community wrote, "A courthouse can be a very intimidating place for someone who has never experienced a justice system firsthand. Today, that was me. I attended a jury trial in support of my daughter, a victim of malicious property destruction." What are the rules? Where do we go? What is allowed and what isn't? Those concerns were dispelled the moment we were greeted by the warm, welcoming face of Melissa Denson, victim-witness advocate at 63rd District Court. She guided us through the process ahead, every detail carefully explained. When it was time to enter as an observer, she gave me directions to seating and cautioned me on what was allowed with my phone. My favorite moment was when she gave me a light tap and instructions to stand for the jury's entrance. I would have probably been admonished by the judge if it wasn't for Melissa. At lunch break, she made suggestions on places to go, and at deliberation, she invited us back to the waiting room. No, the verdict didn't go our way, but that blow was softened by her compassionate words of understanding and suggestion to leave early so we'd not be faced with a defendant. I will never forget that final gesture of kindness. Melissa Denson is a valued county employee with tireless service to witnesses and their family members. Please join me and my daughter in commending her for her graceful skill. Please join us in congratulating Melissa for her notable contributions to the customers of Kent County.
One of Kent County's core values is to provide high-quality service to internal and external
customers.
We are here to recognize Nicholas Young from the Kent County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Wow, they're really killing it in the prosecuting attorney's office. Oh, wow, okay. All right. Kent County Probate Court, who is also selected as one of our quality service employees for the third quarter. The individuals who nominated Nick for providing high-quality service to our external customers wrote, "Most would think, especially when family members are hiding things and not interested in cooperating. Nick always had a smile on his face and would make sure we filed correctly. If we missed a spot, he would say, 'This needs to be filled in,' and when asked, 'What does that mean?' He would explain it to us instead of saying, 'I don't know.'" We have been in and out of this office consistently over the last month as we acted as our fathers' co-guardians and conservators, and he has continually helped us with this very difficult process for us with a smile. Very refreshing and comforting when trying to navigate everything we need to do to get things done. Thank you, Nick. Please join us in congratulating Nick of the Probate Court for his notable contributions
All right. For our next special order of business, we have Mr. Dale Robertson, President/CEO of the Grand Rapids Public Museum, for an annual report. Good morning, Dale.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, my name is Dale Robertson. I'm president of the Grand Rapids Public Museum. If I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to begin with acknowledging not only in my role here but as a citizen Commissioner Antor, Commissioner Breevy, Commissioner Baker, Commissioner Diaz, and Commissioner Wooden. Congratulations on the end of your terms of service here. I was one time a legislative aide in the State Senate. Let's just say the governor's name was Milliken. I've managed campaigns, I've worked on campaigns, I've knocked on more doors in more places, been bitten by dogs, all of that. Let me just tell you, I think one of the hardest things to do is to put your name on the ballot and stand before the citizens. And so I admire you, all of you that have done that, and for those of you today who are ending your terms of service, my admiration for you to have run and to have served and have done it honorably, and to have welcomed me here every year since you all put the millage on the ballot. And I appreciate that, and best wishes to all of you that end your term here. So, if I may, thank you again for having me here today. I'd like to, again, it's my annual report, I really do look forward to this. I'd come every week if you'd let me.
It's public, you can come.
There is a lot that we have accomplished, and the millage has been absolutely key. I would not have imagined that I'd be here when the millage passed in 2016 talking about an expansion. But we expanded because of customer demand and because of the role that had been assigned to us, particularly with the river restoration, to be the education interpretation center for all things regarding the watershed and the river. And that is not just the science, but it's the history and it's the culture. And it's the 30th anniversary of the Van Andel Museum Center this year also. So I'll give a quick, just where we are on the expansion. We're working away on the riverfront. It should be done, if you invite me back again next year about this time, which I hope, it should be finished. The entire riverfront portion ought to be finished, ought to be open. The carousel will have been separated from the building, so it can operate when the museum's closed. It will be totally accessible. And for the first time, it will actually have a spot, there's a couple of chariots on the carousel. One of them will be, for the first time, it's 100 years old, will be wheelchair accessible. We partnered with disability advocates on that, and we have our own local artists that have created that and the exact type of the rest of the carousel, so that's going to be a highlight. Again, the north lawn and then the new school and West Assembly should be done 2026-ish, maybe sometime in late 2025, but for sure the riverfront. Another portion that we haven't talked about a lot is an expansion, or actually, it's remodeling of a portion of what we call the CARC, the Community Archives and Research Center, and that will allow then more regular and routine access into the archives. Museums don't do that, we do. And it is because 98% of our 250,000 artifacts and specimens were donated by the people of West Michigan, so the lawyer in me says there's an implied promise then that we make those accessible and available to the public. And in fact, our county clerk, Lisa Posthumus Lyons, I'll be with her there tomorrow for a press conference on voting, and we'll be able to reference all of the voting equipment that we've had over the years. And so that piece is fully funded, and so we'll begin that addition hopefully in sometime in 2025. So the millage has allowed us to invest in education in ways that we were unable to do before. So we break other museum rules by putting artifacts and specimens in people's hands. You may have heard this before, because it's one of my favorites to mention, is so when a third grader drops a mastodon tooth and breaks it in half, we know what the inside of a mastodon tooth looks like. We've got a dozen more. It's worth it, because the visceral experience, being there with the real thing, creates the stronger hooks for future information to land on. And so that's why we serve 40,000 students annually, and with the addition that we're putting on as part of the expansion, we'll get up to 80,000. And am I certain we'll meet it? Yes, because we are turning school groups away. So the millage has helped us in those pieces. We also partner. Partnering is an important piece of what we do. One of the people we partner with, you'll hear next, the Kent District Library, partnered with them for reading lists with exhibits that we come in, including some things we partner with for our digital literacy program. We also really have gone in the last few years into some partnering on higher ed, so graduate-level classes and the Occupational Therapy Program at Grand Valley State have written papers, because we really embrace and use the Occupational Therapy Program as we design exhibits, because color, temperature, texture, lighting, all of that matters to be physically and cognitively accessible to the broadest population. So they publish papers. The College of Education at Grand Valley State has published papers on the Grand Rapids Public Museum School, of which one of the co-founders is sitting to my left here, because it's a unique combination of place-based education, design thinking, and a museum mindset project base. And will be some research published on, of course, the mastodon. And one thing that I want to brag about just for a second, if I can, our curator, one of our science curators, Dr. Corey Redman, who led the extraction of the mastodon, was invited by a university in the United States, New Mexico, and a university in Paraguay to go there to do some research on water systems, by which we'll then be able to bring that research back and talk about it here, too. So one of the things that we do, of course, is we always look at our collections and how do we add to the collections and enhance the collections and further engage and serve the people of West Michigan. And I'd like to talk just for a minute about a particular program and how it engages the community, but also how it adds into our digital literacy strategy. Our digital literacy strategy really began with just putting our collections online. And I remember us doing it before Smithsonian, I read about them doing it, so I think they copied us. But there was, you know, why would you put it online? Isn't that a threat? Wouldn't people not come? No, more people have come, because it's made the collection more accessible, and people become aware of it. And also, then, part of the digital literacy then said, "Okay, literacy is more than just reading as the library, it's also writing." So how can we engage people to be creators of content, not just consumers of content? So the digital literacy plan is, we partnered with a local entity, Yeti CGI, and there is a platform, which will be rolling out soon, called Public OS. It comes loaded with a museum database, and then it allows then users, if they want to create their own content. What we're finding, or schools are grabbing this a lot, but as we move it out into the community, one of the ways that we've done that, again, with Commissioner Baker, is something we've called GR Stories, which is just simply collecting stories to go into the archives for the community to access and add to in the future. The first one we did was a couple of years ago on the history of the Polish Halls. And then we did one on the 49507 project. And then after some engagement with National Constitution Center, we have, there's residents here in Grand Rapids, while Doug DeVos and Hank Meyer, they're on the board of the National Constitution Center, which is really good, solid information. We thought we could then partner, particularly with some local schools. The History Teacher of the Year at Kentwood Public has been a partner in these, and we've had three, we've had a series on issues that deal with the 14th Amendment. The last one we did was over at the Ford Museum, and it was on the history of Auburn Hills, right? And because, right, Supreme Court cases which applied the 14th Amendment, due process, equal protection laws to the states, and allowed for the enforcement of fair housing, civil rights, and voting rights. And so some of the panels that we created are now being displayed at the Grand Rapids African American Museum, the Fair Housing Center, Fair Estate University, and then those pieces go into our archives. We're creating a digital map, so if you go into Auburn Hills, you'll be able to scan QR codes and learn more about the neighborhood. So that's just a piece of where that goes. We did have a presentation at the last board meeting. Commissioner Merchant is a member of our board, and she can tell you more. The robot dog did come, and that is also part of that. So there will be more of that that will be rolling out as we try to embrace that digital strategy to further engage. So really, I think, let me sum it up again by thanking you for putting the millage on the ballot and being able to pass it. It has made all the difference in the world in terms of what we've been able to accomplish and how we've been able to serve the community and engage and act as we should as a publicly-owned entity. At our core, we are an educational institution. We are a learning institution, and it has been, because we're arguably the oldest museum in the state of Michigan, it has been generations and generations upon generations. And what I look forward to, particularly with this expansion, is the involvement of the generations to come. So I thank you for having me here today. I've given you our annual report. When I come back, at the end of 10 years, at the end of the millage, it'll be a 10-volume set of everything that we've accomplished since the millage has passed, and it is the charge that you gave to us. So thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members, for having me here today.
Thank you. We may have some questions for you, if you're willing to answer them. Any comments or questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
Love the museum. My grandkids love it, and we just, we have a blast there. I had a kind of a goofy question about that mastodon. What was it about that location, or how was that so well-preserved, and could we expect to find other things like that, or was that like a one-off, that just everything was perfect in the soil, whatever preserved that? How does that work?
So, thank you. It was one of those maybe happy accidents, honestly. You know, there was a road crew, and they hit something that wasn't a cow, you know, the bones were just bigger, and stopped. And yeah, I think it was just a matter of the topography, and what we don't know is, what, is it dragged there by somebody and killed, or did it just, over time, make its way? We are in the process right now of having it 3D-scanned, and that will allow us to go, and scientists to go pretty far in-depth, to try to learn more about how it met its demise, but it was just one of those accidents. We did some searching around there, and there's no evidence of anything else. We didn't find the tusks, and we didn't find the upper part of the skull, which we wish we would have. They're pretty rare. So it was, you know, and again, you know, thanks to Drain Commissioner Ken Yonker, so when it was hit, it was actually in Newago County, but he was managing the project. And to his credit, he said, "Call the public museum." And then we called you of them, but our, your curator here, Dr. Corey Redman, he led the extraction. We've got the talent here. And that's one of the things I like to, the Detroit guy, Don River, I like to remind people, "We've got the talent and the expertise right here, and we did it."
Well, I appreciate working with you over the years and your enthusiasm for your job. I love it. Thank you.
All right. Yes, Mr. Baker.
Yeah, I want to thank you for mentioning me three times. You can never overstate my contributions to the community, but I also want, so we had the idea for the museum school, but the funding for the museum school came about because of the Kent County Strategic Impact Director, Josh Spencer.
That's true.
To make sure he got recognized for that work, so that's all.
All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Dale, always appreciate you coming here, your enthusiasm, and where this is you are to have you here to give this presentation. You've always been welcoming to all the Commissioners, and every time I've gone to the museum, I've gone there with the anticipation of being inspired in some way, and you've never let me down. So I'm looking forward to seeing the completion of Riverfront Project. I'll be retired next year, and I've got fishing gear, so I'll probably be hanging out front, looking to catch some salmon, and just appreciate, again, your enthusiasm, and looking forward to the other nine reports that are going to come.
All right. If I may, may I?
You may.
You know, if you would have told me at the beginning of this project that we would be actually working with the steel headers, right? But part of that is, is that we hope people will fish. And so when we talked about the design of that, we wanted to make sure that it was accessible as best we can in how that land, it's tough land, so self-propelled accessible. So those ramps are beyond ADA. They're beyond that. But also to make sure that it was designed well for fishing, and the steel headers were a good source of information. So it's, these things happen, you have partnerships and perspectives that come out that you never expected, but boy, did we benefit.
All righty. Commissioner Beckler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Dale. Great to see you, great to hear all the great work that you're doing. You touched on the museum school, but I also wanted to elevate in your report some of the great work that you're doing in the out-of-school, after-school, and summer-school space. And I'm wondering if you might talk a little bit about what the vision is with your education staff and how that's really supporting the students of Kent County in that sort of, in those three spaces.
Yeah, so if I may, thank you for that. So there is, I'm on the board of another organization called Michigan Future Incorporated, so it's a public policy think tank advocacy organization, and education is one of the pieces. So largely through my participation there is where I really became aware of the impact that those extracurricular kinds of opportunities and experiences have. So the after-school, young women in science that we funded for years, even the week-long Immersed Program, where schools come and spend the entire week at the museum, the summer camps. The summer camps are now doing, I mentioned digital, we got kids that are creating, you know, these digital cities through these summer camps. I mean, it's beyond what I, being born in the 50s, what I can imagine. So they play a very important role because of what we know from that research about the importance of those extracurricular, summer, after-school types of programs, including we'll be expanding more, our goal is to have at least one public program a month. The next one coming up will be Ethnic Heritage Festival in November, but ideally, we'll get the special public programs every single Saturday for those types of things. And that's another one of our partners, like we partner with Michigan State every year, they have this neuroscience week, and they bring in actual brains, and, you know, so it's just, all of those things, I thank you for asking that, are highly impactful and a very important part of what we do. Last thing I'll say, that, you know, we do clearly focus on young people and students because of the millage. Every youth, 0 to 17, in Kent County gets in free, but as Keith Richards said not long ago, you know, when he was head, because he's got to learn how to replay the guitar because of his arthritis, he never finished school, man. So these public programs are for all learners, all ages, even people that are my age and look like me.
Wow. Okay. Commissioner Hennessy.
As you celebrate your 30th anniversary at the current location, maybe you could talk a little bit about how it came to be at that site, and, you know, the growth that you're now experiencing. Review for us a little bit about the history of it.
Sure. So thank you. Yeah, so the old museum building was a museum home since 1940. It was a WPA project building. And really, there's a couple of things of that building that set the tone even for this building and how we even operate today. So the quote from the director at the time, Frank Demond, was that the goal was for that building to be as friendly, as accessible as your neighborhood dime store and as friendly as your next-door neighbor. And it was a street-level entry, which was unique in the nation. The museum simply outgrew that space, and it had no space to accommodate large traveling exhibits. So a group of community leaders began to plan to move it over to the west side, and Jay Van Andel and Betty Van Andel, but Jay were the lead private donors. Kent County was a major donor, the city and the DDA was a major donor, the state of Michigan was a major donor. So it was one of those public-private partnerships that we really do so well here. And that building was created so we could have those traveling exhibits, so we could have after-evening events and weddings and proms and conferences, and also a workshop where we could create our own exhibits. Since we've been in there for these 30 years, we've created and built 70 of our own exhibits. So, and that's all, again, local talent, local people that are creating all of those. And including, when the Dead, you know, you remember when we had the Dead Sea Scrolls here? Okay, we, our people here, your fellow citizens, designed and created the entire exhibit. The scrolls came from Israel, but nothing else, right? So we have the skills, we have the facilities, that building's a gift. It is truly a gift, and the measure of a gift is how the public has embraced it. I'm going to spoil this now, because we're going to talk about it in our gala, but I'll tell you here, 10 million people, over 30 years, have come through the doors of the Van Andel Museum Center.
Okay, great. Follow-up? Nope. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. Dale, I'll have to say you are the gift. You have the energy to run the museum, you have the foresight, the leadership, the collaboration. I really appreciate how you make sure that you include everyone, and I mean everyone, in everything that you do. I don't think our museum could be as, without you. I just don't think that we'd be where we're at. So thank you very much for your leadership.
I appreciate that. That's very kind. Thank you. All right. Well, and I will join in thanking you for your hard work, for everything you bring to in thanking you for your hard work, for everything you bring to, to the museum and to this community and certainly express our gratitude to your entire team for all the work that you do. I will express a little disappointment. We didn't have bones this time, but maybe next time. Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next special order, we have with us Mr. Lance Warner from the Kent District Library. Oh, all right.
I'm the Chair of the Kent District Library Board, so I'm going first, so I will pass it over to Lance a little bit later. Again, I'm Andrew Erwin, current Chair of the Kent District Library. I was struck by the details Darryl went into about the expansion of the public museum, because what I want to mention today is the expansion plans of four different communities in Kent County for their libraries. In Walker, Cascade, Tyrone, and in my hometown of Rockford, all these communities are building or planning library expansions. And why are these communities investing in expanding their local libraries? Because libraries are a community asset that provide a range of services and spaces that improve the quality of life for their residents. That is the mission of the Kent District Library, improving Kent County residents' quality of life and aiming to be the cornerstone for local learning, connection, and personal growth. And in the essence of brevity, I will turn things over to Lance Warner.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm here to talk on behalf of the Grand Rapids Public Museum and just want to say Dale does a heck of a job. My family loves the museum. I also want you to acknowledge that I sound terrible. I am sick and I want you to know that it's highly contagious, so enjoy yourselves. We're okay. I'll be brief.
Adam, Adam's in the back.
Anyway, 2020-3 was a great year for us. We had, we had, we became number 49 in the world for digital circulation and experienced an 8% increase overall with a total of 7.7 million checkouts, 46% increase in-person program attendance. We had almost 200,000 attendees spanning all ages across the county. We had a 15% increase in visits to the library, a 2.3 million total in-person visits. And we gave out over 20,000 meals to kids during the summer. And we're so thankful for your support. We're so excited about all the building projects and the fact that this county really appreciates literacy. And we feel a sort of a deep, a deep value for all the citizenry and we're glad to be here to help them. It's kind of a shared dream and a shared passion among all of us. And it's always a pleasure to come before you. And I'm sorry I don't have a lot of voice today, but next time I'll drink more coffee and won't be sick. So, until then, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, sort of.
Great. You didn't bring bones though, did you?
No. No, no bones, sorry.
Questions or comments for Lance? Yes. Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a question for you, but I just wanted to say that, I think I said this last time you were here too, but I spent a long, a lot of time, hours and hours and hours at the KDL branch in Wyoming growing up and racked up quite a bit of fees there too. So, I want to thank you all for the work that you do, not just yourself, but the public museum as well. I read an article, I think at the beginning of this year or late last year, about how our general, our current generations, the younger generations have fewer and fewer so-called third places to go to, places that are not home or not, not work. And places like the public museum, places like public libraries, those are the places that get passed down to the new generations every year. And those are the places that we need to be investing more and more. And so, I'm glad to see that you are, that there's plans for expansions in the, in the locations that you mentioned. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Chair. All throughout my neighborhood, I see the signs for the library and I thank you. I did not know some of the resources that you have there and I learned about those this summer. So, thank you very much for your collaborations and some of the really cool things that you're bringing in, the cool people that you're bringing in, the artists. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being part of the family. And that's all Randy Goble, the Love My Library Campaign. And it actually has been adopted by people outside of the county who aren't part of our district because they just like the signs. So, nice shooting, Randy, you know, that's great.
Anyone else? All right, if not, again, thank you so much Lance for everything you do and
God bless you all.
And thank you for your work and express our gratitude as well to, to your full team. I too appreciate seeing those signs out there. As I'm out knocking doors, I say, "Well, what do we do?" We do that. So, I take credit for it. Thank you.
That's good. Take care, everybody. Thank you.
Hope you're feeling better. All right, onto public comment. This is our first opportunity for public comment. If you wish to address us with respect to matters that are on the agenda only at this time, you may do so. You have up to three minutes. Please identify yourself by name and your address. Thank you.
How you doing, everybody? I gotta give a shout-out to KDL because of the cool things I've been able to do with KDL. As you guys know, I gave a presentation about two years ago. The KDL actually connected with them here. This is the only time I've ever seen Lance besides the gala that they had where I spoke to one of the Van Andels and she let me know that her son goes to Catholic Central and he's on the esports team there. But it was pretty cool though, because me coming to Kent County Board and being active, I actually ran into people like Lance who works on our county's library system, the executive director. And I've been able to do cool things like help them connect to Epic Games, which they held a global esports competition where kids also design islands. 200-plus kids across the globe actually designed Fortnite islands and they gave out some nice cash prizes. I also spoke to Dale, I ran into Dale at one of the events at the public museum and I was speaking to him about Fortnite design. So, I'm gonna get, show you guys just a little picture real quick. So, this picture is actually a museum that people, someone designed on Fortnite. So, I'm gonna speak to Dale. He just gave me his card. He didn't have one at the time I spoke to him, but he just seen me and passed me his card. And I'm actually gonna speak to him about getting Fortnite designed so people can actually digitally design museums at our public museum. So, that was just really cool. This is funny how the universe spins because two people I've already looked to work with and just doing cool things around our community and already had an economic impact on our county, just being able to be here. That was so cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Steck, Commissioners and staff and fellow citizens. Daniel Scott once again, still a longtime resident of Kent County. But again, my real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you, Commissioner Green, for your invocation, especially the prayer for the poor, abused, and the unborn. By the way, your first name means "son of my right hand." Not my right hand, but I guess your father's, your earthly father. Okay, I want to address the agenda item, Behavioral Health Crisis Stabilization Unit Grant. And I ran this off the internet, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Again, I've ministered in the inner city for almost 44 years and have ministered to hundreds of souls with substance abuse, whether it's marijuana, crack, meth, or of course alcohol. First of all, I would appeal, if this board has any power, to stop licensing these weed stores and these new breweries. I see the devastation almost every day in the inner city. We're now called the Beer City. What a name to have. We may soon be called the Weed City. But I would hope that you would spend this quarter of a million dollars not just on so-called treatment for these lifestyle sinful behaviors, choices that these people make to be addicted to these drugs, because that would only cover up the core sinful lifestyle choices. The core issue is spiritual, not mental. Appropriate these funds to, I would encourage you, Christian scriptural organizations. And I'm not asking for any of it. Just do some research and that have a successful record of truly helping people from deliverance. The real issue is the Lord Jesus Christ. He's the real answer. I speak from experience. I used to be a slave to marijuana and alcohol over 50 years ago. Jesus Christ delivered me and I didn't have to go to NA or AA or any counseling or have any other medication. Jesus Christ can deliver anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I don't see anyone else. So, we'll move to the next item, our consent agenda, and I will call on Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move the adoption of the consent agenda for today's date.
Is there support?
Supported by Commissioner Coleman. Questions, comments? I see none. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wooden,
Yes.
Teal,
Yes.
Sparks,
Yes.
Ponstein,
Yes.
Pakla,
Yes.
Oliver King,
Yes.
Merchant,
Yes.
McLeod,
Yes.
Culman,
Yes.
Hildenbrand,
Yes.
Hennessy,
Yes.
Vice Chair Green,
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz,
Yes.
DeBoer,
Yes.
Burl,
Yes.
Bujack,
Yes.
Brevi,
Yes.
Baker,
Yes.
Antor,
Yes.
Chair Steck,
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to our resolutions, beginning with 8A, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move that Resolution 112 of today's date, add one 0.6 FTE public health nurse position for the early childhood millage-led prevention program brought to us by the Health Department be adopted.
Thank you. Is there support?
Supported by Commissioner Pakla.
Are there any questions or comments on this motion? Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Steck. So, Al, just for information purpose, for people listening online and people that follow our, our minutes and that. So, one would look at this prop and just say, "Well, that's nice. We've got an early childhood millage. They're putting money towards lead prevention." What, what is the total amount that not that group, but Kent County spends on lead prevention, lead removal, and the whole gamut?
There are multiple sources, programs, and budgets, so I'm going to have to put that together for you. And I can send that to the board as well.
All right, anyone else? If not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 112, Commissioners Wooden,
Yes.
Teal,
Yes.
Sparks,
Yes.
Ponstein,
Yes.
Pakla,
Yes.
Oliver King,
Yes.
Merchant,
Yes.
McLeod,
Yes.
Culman,
Yes.
Hildenbrand,
Yes.
Hennessy,
Yes.
Vice Chair Green,
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz,
Yes.
DeBoer,
Yes.
Burl,
Yes.
Bujack,
Yes.
Brevi,
Yes.
Baker,
Yes.
Antor,
Yes.
Chair Steck,
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 112 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to 8B and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 113 of today's date, the Behavioral Health Crisis Stabilization Unit Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Supported.
Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this one? If not, I, I will just add, I, I am very pleased to be able to accept this grant, assuming that we approve this resolution. This grant does allow the crisis center to be able to provide services without any concern or reservation about whether the people coming in there in crisis are either insured or uninsured. It simply doesn't matter. They will be served as they show. So, it's really an important grant. All right, with that, it is a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 113, Commissioners Wooden,
Yes.
Teal,
Yes.
Sparks,
Yes.
Ponstein,
Yes.
Pakla,
Yes.
Oliver King,
Yes.
Merchant,
Yes.
McLeod,
Yes.
Culman,
Yes.
Hildenbrand,
Yes.
Hennessy,
Yes.
Vice Chair Green,
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz,
Yes.
DeBoer,
Yes.
Burl,
Yes.
Bujack,
Yes.
Brevi,
Yes.
Baker,
Yes.
Antor,
Yes.
Chair Steck,
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 113 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next resolution, I will call on Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move Resolution 114 of today's date, the 2024 Apportionment Report brought to us by our County Equalization Director, Megan Van Hoos, and the Equalization Department.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Any questions or comments on this one? If not, this too is a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 114, Commissioners Wooden,
Yes.
Teal,
Yes.
Sparks,
Yes.
Ponstein,
Yes.
Pakla,
Yes.
Oliver King,
Yes.
Merchant,
Yes.
McLeod,
Yes.
Culman,
Yes.
Hildenbrand,
Yes.
Hennessy,
Yes.
Vice Chair Green,
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz,
Yes.
DeBoer,
Yes.
Burl,
Yes.
Bujack,
Yes.
Brevi,
Yes.
Baker,
Yes.
Antor,
Yes.
Chair Steck,
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 112 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to 8B and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 113 of today's date, the Behavioral Health Crisis Stabilization Unit Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Supported.
Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Thank you. Any questions or comments on this one? If not, I, I will just add, I, I am very pleased to be able to accept this grant, assuming that we approve this resolution. This grant does allow the crisis center to be able to provide services without any concern or reservation about whether the people coming in there in crisis are either insured or uninsured. It simply doesn't matter. They will be served as they show. So, it's really an important grant. All right, with that, it is a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 113, Commissioners Wooden,
Yes.
Teal,
Yes.
Sparks,
Yes.
Ponstein,
Yes.
Pakla,
Yes.
Oliver King,
Yes.
Merchant,
Yes.
McLeod,
Yes.
Culman,
Yes.
Hildenbrand,
Yes.
Hennessy,
Yes.
Vice Chair Green,
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz,
Yes.
DeBoer,
Yes.
Burl,
Yes.
Bujack,
Yes.
Brevi,
Yes.
Baker,
Yes.
Antor,
Yes.
Chair Steck,
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 113 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next and last resolution, I will call on Commissioner, Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair. I move the adoption of Resolution 115, Dissolvement of the Friend of the Court Citizens Advisory Committee from the Board Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Brevi. Questions or comments? If not, this, yeah, Commissioner Sparks.
I'd like to know why we are dissolving this.
You want me to answer that?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, as represented in the, in the resolution and the information, this committee was created, I believe, in 2017 at a point where there was an expressed and determined need for that. It was followed up and has been active since then. However, I think there have been a number of changes in how the Friend of the Court has operated since then, suggesting that it really does not provide any valuable service on an ongoing basis. It's been unable to meet in sufficient number of times as required by the statute. And it has been the thought that continuing to ask our Friend of the Court staff to put all the energy and effort into, into appearing and presenting to this committee and the
Just in simple terms, I think I'm following the reasoning here, but for people who don't talk about this day to day out, what is it that they were assigned to do, the duty that they were assigned to do, and that they haven't had a need to do, if that makes sense? Because if that is coming up before the agenda, it makes sense, but...
Do you want to respond? I didn't know we have representatives from the F O C here. I would say something, but I might get that one wrong because I don't sit on that committee.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Diaz, for the good question. The primary function for the Friend of the Court Advisory Committee, my name is Tracy Schenkel, current Kent County Friend of the Court, is to review the grievances that we receive from citizens. So, citizens, if they have an issue with an operation or decision made by our office, they file the grievance. The Citizens Advisory Committee then creates a subcommittee, or as the committee as a whole, reviews each of those grievances. To date for 2024, we have 12 grievances sort of slated for review by the committee, but they have not met sufficient times or had a quorum sufficient times to review those grievances. And maybe that, as a follow-up, these grievances are reviewed by other bodies, so they can be reviewed by the Chief Judge of the 17th Circuit Court, and every year they are also reviewed by the State Court Administrative's Office, Friend of the Court Bureau. So, there are other folks that in fact see these, and the Friend of the Court Bureau puts together a legislative report for legislators in Lansing to review those grievances as well.
I don't, I guess I'm a little bit confused now, because it sounds like we were saying that there's nothing for them to do, but they do have 12 grievances, but they didn't meet enough times to handle those. And so, they can go to somewhere else, but I guess now I'm a little bit confused.
Where do those grievances go in the normal course?
In the normal course of business, for the other 81 counties who do not have a Friend of the Court Citizens Advisory Committee, they either end with our response, or citizens appeal those to the Chief Judge.
And that also can happen here.
Absolutely.
And if they're not satisfying the Chief Judge, where can they go?
If they're not satisfied with the Chief Judge, then they can...
Can they take it to the State Court?
Take it to the State Court Administrator's Office, who will take up whatever appropriate court of action that they see fit at that time.
And the grievance has to do with what happened, something that could have happened in the court process?
In the Friend of the Court.
In the Friend of the Court. Okay. All right, thank you.
Somebody else had it over here. Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. One is, this was created because of a perceived need, and I'm wondering what has happened that that need has gone away? We feel that now there's a way to deal with it that there wasn't in 2017. Like, was there a much greater number of grievances or something of that nature? And then I'm also wondering whether there was input from the members of this advisory council when considering this decision.
The answer to the second question is, we did consult with the Chair of this committee, and I don't know if the Chair is here, but the Chair had expressed interest in continuing the committee, but nevertheless continues to have a difficult time having the committee meet sufficient times to justify its existence under the statute. The other question was, what has happened to the number of challenges or grievances?
Well, it was created for a reason, and so what was that perceived reason at the time that evidently is not true anymore?
So, I was here then, so I'll comment from my recollection. It was a series of questions and challenges raised by members of the public about the Friend of the Court's enforcement protocol, particularly the extent to which they used either arrest subpoenas or things of that nature. And so, it was of concern enough that it was thought then we should have the advisory committee instituted to do the oversight of those enforcement protocols. I think there's been a significant change at the Friend of the Court with respect to how they enforce the orders, particularly the orders for support, and so I don't think that it is the same environment that we had back in 2017. That's my personal recollection. There may be other members that were here. Oops, not many.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. While this resolution seems kind of mundane, I just want to take a moment and celebrate, I think, some very good aspects of this, leading back in history to 2017 when this originated, as Chair Steck stated, kind of the circumstances around that. I recall in my decade serving on this board, I've seen a lot of passionate advocacy from the community on, you know, concerns, and this particular one, I recall being one of the most effective. They were the group that came and advocated, you know, they were passionate, they were deeply concerned, but they handled themselves, you know, extremely well, were very respectful. And if I recall correctly, Commissioner Bukowski was a big part of kind of initiating this approach to help address those concerns, and I think it was very warranted and very effective for a number of years, and I'm supportive of winding it down. I think this also shows good governance, you know, the old saying, there's nothing more permanent than a temporary government program. Here's an example of Kent County, I think, doing it right, where this was a very, very important committee, and it served its purpose, and now we can wind it down, as the chairman said, we can, if the need arises, reactivate it in the future. So, I'm very supportive of the whole process for these many years and the effects it's had and the approach that's been taken.
Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will echo Commissioner Coleman's comments about how this is an example of us attending to good government here. You know, I think one of the important things that we do is we make sure that we are utilizing the resources of the county in the best way possible. I think one of the questions or concerns that I have about this item is related to transparency. One of the benefits of having a public committee like this is the level of transparency that comes about from having those types of meetings. Certainly, when a committee doesn't meet, you don't get transparency, but if the intent is to have that transparency, the committee's structure lends itself well to that. So, I guess my question is, what sorts of trade-offs are there with regard to transparency? How much transparency does exist within the grievance process that would be left after the dissolution of this committee? And is that level of transparency acceptable to the constituents that we all serve?
For comparison of what happens with a grievance now, I'll have to defer to the Friend of the Court to comment on that. I think part of the consideration for some of us is if it's a committee that is not able to meet, there's not a lot of transparency. If it's not a meeting that has sufficient substance to it to keep your quorum there, that suggests you don't have transparency. And if it's a statutory requirement that you do this, then we're really not meeting even the statute's mandate. But anyway, I'll defer to the Friend of the Court.
Thank you, and thank you for the good question. We do have other levels of oversight that involve both opportunities for public comment as well as a publishing of report that is available for public review. For instance, every year, we do an annual statutory review that is overseen by our Chief Judge of the 17th Circuit. Citizens are invited, and there is notice posted, to provide comment about Friend of the Court and our current operations, and provide their input and their feelings. All of that input is put into that public report, and that is published. There is also an annual State Court Administrative Office report that we do annually that is also published and available for public view. Absolutely.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Just to refresh you, how many members were on this committee? I mean, it was substantial, right?
Depends what you mean by substantial. I'm not sure I can answer the question. Is anyone... Nine.
Okay. So, and this is one of, I mean, we appoint to a lot of committees, and I think a lot of times, that's a problem with a committee, you know, with the states involved, they got to make sure every single group is represented, and some committees that meet at the state level have 40, 50 members, and the quorum is always a problem, let alone finding people to serve. On the Substance Abuse Advisory Committee, we're constantly having trouble getting a quorum, getting people to serve, and then appointing them, and then have them even show up. So, I think the whole way, you know, a lot of these are mandated by the state who and what is on that committee, but, you know, that might be something we look at, is that a lot of times, the size of these committees prove them ineffective in the end.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, so, in the times in my district that people know what the county does, this comes up a lot, and, you know, I'm reviewing this, that this committee does not actually handle the grievances, they just check the grievances to see that there's some. So, it seems, I'm not sure exactly what Commissioner Ponstein was getting at here, but it seems to me like the problem is, people don't show up to a committee. It's the people, and I don't know who I'm criticizing here, so it's the people not showing up to the committee. So, I mean, to some extent, that's, you know, that's part of the problem, and if it's a consistent problem. My issue only is that there are concerns in the community I represent about the operation of the Friends of the Court. It comes up, and it would be so, and it appears that there's a grievance process in place that's adequate, but it does seem like we need to make sure that this is a fairly accessible process and a process that is responsive to, you know, concerns in the community. So, that's all I have about, I think I can support this resolution, but a little wary about, you know, what takes its place.
All right. I was just going to answer that question on the number. Commissioner Pakla's right, it is set by statute, it is defined as to who qualifies to sit on the committee. It is nine members, and it's a bit of a cumbersome process, but yes. Before I get to your second, if I could, anyone else? Commissioner Hennessy.
So, we established this committee in response to a problem in 2017, but yet it's covered, it's, many of the specifics in terms of how it operates is covered by state law? That's interesting.
Creating it is covered by state law.
Okay.
Suspending it is covered by state law. That's why we're bringing it up.
Okay, so, you know, this has been an interesting discussion, and to hear the various points of view on this, because, you know, one of my first thoughts is, you know, how much flexibility do we have to, you know, modify the committee so that it works better? What I liked about the committee is that it does provide outside eyes. Otherwise, the process is all internal to the probate court, and sometimes citizens don't feel as though, you know, I'm dealing with this court at this level, and then my appeal is to the court at this level, and so on, so they're never getting that outside view of things. And I, that's one reason that I particularly like the idea of this committee, you know, and I'm just thinking, how do we make it work if there have been 12 complaints? The other thing is, and this is sort of a pet peeve of mine, is that we really, we used to receive annual reports, and I'm not recalling, that we've been kept up to date on what has been asked, you know, from this particular committee and how it's been handled. So, I'm like, this is catching me a little bit by surprise, and on all of our advisory committees, it seems like, you know, we don't know a lot about what they're handling, you know, and the outcomes, what they're achieving for us. So, it's almost, my question and my concern here is almost broader than this particular one, but I'm not in favor of dismantling it this time, because it's the first I've heard of it, and I'm wondering, what else can we do? What other options do we have, even given the constraints of state law?
Yeah, I would, if I can respond briefly, I think that under the statute, there's not a lot of options. It is, it's a statistically-defined committee, so when we did establish it in 17, we followed that format. We didn't have to, we could use an advisory committee, as you suggested. We could have used a Rule 6 advisory committee, which would have given us a lot more flexibility as to what we asked them to do, how often they had to meet, and so on. But as long as we use this format, it's set by statute, so just as this, we can't modify it and say, you only have to meet four times a year, or you only have to meet if there's a particular express concern. You don't have to give a report. All of those mandates are in the statute, and I think the point that staff and I are suggesting is, this committee is not functioning within that. It does not appear to have a sufficient urgency to meet those requirements. There seems to be sufficient oversight, and I'm not sure that the judge would say that he's part of the Friend of the Court. I think the judge is a distinctly unique, independent individual to take a complaint. So, the process under the statute is, the only other thing you can do is dissolve it. Now, as I said before, if we as a body conclude that there is still an issue that we want to address at the Friend of the Court through a different kind of committee, that gives more flexibility. There's nothing to preclude us from doing that at a subsequent time.
Then my follow-up question would be, do you have such an intent to have a...
I don't, as the Chair, I don't currently have that intent, because I'm not seeing that there's a sufficient express need. Every time you create a committee, it's nice for those of you that meet, but I know that that requires staff to do a lot of work preparing for those, particularly in this case, the Friend of the Court has to prepare for every one of these meetings, whether they have them or they don't have them. And so, to ask the staff to put all that time into it, I think, requires us, it's incumbent upon us to say, we have a significant enough issue here to justify asking to do that. And I'm not sure that we see that yet. I'm not saying that we couldn't find a different justification for a different kind of committee, I just don't see it for this committee. Now, we're up to seconds, I'm sorry. Before I get to you, I think Commissioner LaGrand had it.
Thank you, Chair. I have one more question, which is, the, it sounds like the next level of recourse is to appeal to the Chief Judge, who is obviously an extremely busy person, and it mentioned in the resolution, the language makes it sound as if that is, it only is part of the Friend of the Court Director's performance review. Am I understanding the resolution correctly? Is that the only sense in which...
I think a grievance can go directly to the Chief Judge. Does not have to be tied to a performance review.
And it's dealt with at that time, or only annually as part of the review?
Thank you. It's dealt with at that time. So, and in the last several years, I think we've had two that have been appealed to the Chief Judge, and they go directly to the Chief Judge, who responds promptly and gets back to those citizens right away.
Okay. The other comment I would like to make is just to echo Commissioner Hennessy's comments that, first of all, this did seem to come sort of without any, I mean, just as the resolution, but no real background, or that this was some sort of crisis brewing and something that needs to be dealt with, but the idea that outside eyes would look at it, and also the idea that a local group would be doing it rather than appealing to the state level or the, or the, you know, to a judge. So, that's what gives me hesitation about it, and just knowing that these are people who are, you know, obviously at a very distressed time in their life, and although I haven't heard personally from constituents about this, but that wouldn't necessarily surprise me, given those circumstances. And if we have, if we are kind of the victim of a bad state form that we can't make work, then I would, I would hope that we'd be very open to doing something in the future where at least the people involved can be sure that their grievances are being heard by a local group kind of outside the structure of the system. Thank you.
And, of course, I can only speak on behalf of myself. I don't know who's going to be Chair next, but it seems to me that at that point, it's really, what's the need? I mean, we need to, before we just create committees, we should make sure that it's clear what's the need that has to be addressed, justifying the appointment of a committee, and then we can define and wrap it around and appoint it to do that. Personally, I think that a grievance appeal to the Chief Judge seems to me a whole lot more powerful than a group of nine community folks, but that's just me, but we can, we can still deal with that, I think, at that point. Before I get to you, I think, Mr. Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. I had two quick questions. One, you mentioned there's two current counties that have this. What is the other county?
The other county is Macomb. The other county is Macomb County.
Okay. Interesting. Sometimes we're in the same loop as Oakland, or Ottawa, or even Wasna, or Wayne. I don't think we've ever been looped in with Macomb, but fun. Not that that's a problem, it's, you know, interesting. The second question is, you said that there are currently 12 grievances on the docket. Is there a period where it has to sit on the friend of the court advisory committee's docket with an action before it can go to the chief judge? Or does it just stay there in perpetuity because that committee cannot meet?
Thank you for that. That's a good point of clarification. We have responded to every one of these grievances and followed up with every one of these citizens. The citizens advisory committee's role is simply to review the grievance, and they will let us know if they agree or disagree with how we responded, and that is essentially their role. There's no further action taken than that. And their thoughts about whether or not they agree or disagree with our action are reported to the state court administrative office in their annual review that they provide to them.
So their comments don't necessarily undo an appeal. It is simply whether or not, in their review of an appeal, they thought you did the right or wrong thing, and then it's reviewed by scale?
Correct, and there's, yes, that's correct.
Okay. I think the report was, they've agreed with 96% of the decisions of the FOC.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I understand the anxiety, especially from my colleagues who served here when this was created, but given the facts, I think I would be more inclined to simply put in place performance metrics to examine concerns with friend of the court, should an advisory committee need to be reformed at a later date, so that we can anticipate that before we have a recurrence, or folks are coming to this meeting pleading for us to do something because there's a problem. But maybe putting into, taking some time and deliberation to figure out what those metrics are, if the, you know, the number of appeals increase, if appeals to scale increase, maybe that could be a way of seeing if there's a problem before there's a problem. And, but, you know, the idea of having a committee that cannot meet, that is just slowing down a process, I struggle to see the value in keeping it at this time. But would be very interested in, you know, and I realize I'm not going to be here either, but seeing if there's value in creating a standing Rule 6 committee, even if it meets at a far more intermittent basis to review some of these, just to provide feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. This committee was open to the public, correct? People could come in and speak?
Yes, it's, is open to the public.
Okay. So, any potential complainants out there, they did have an opportunity to go to that committee, and I have never heard anything back that there's not an outlet for people making complaints, and it just seems like that being a public committee, that'd be a good time for people. If there was a real problem, it seems like they'd get real busy, and we'd get notification of that. So I'm not sure, I like, I as well like to see when these committees can wind down and say, you know, we had some success, we're not getting complaints anymore, and I trust the court to handle this, and if they need help, they can come back to us and say, we need help. Thank you.
I was going to answer, there was a question on this that's coming up fairly quickly, and I apologize for that, but I frankly have been looking at this for probably a year at this point, in going back and studying and asking folks for their input and their advice, including the committee members, the FOC. I frankly had thought that it was my ability to suspend the committee if it was unable to meet, if there was not sufficient cause to justify staff coming in and doing that, that we had just suspended. And it was at that point, I think I heard from corporate counsel, you can't suspend it, you can only, you can only terminate it, and so if you want to reengage it. So that's why the options are relatively limited at this point. All right. With that, this is a voice vote, so all those that support the motion to, or the resolution to dissolve the FOC advisory committee, say yes?
Yes.
Or oppose, say no?
No.
Okay. I rule that the yeses have it, and the motion is approved. All right. We will move on now to the second opportunity for public comment. If there was anyone here that wishes to address the board with respect to general jurisdiction matters, you may do so at this time. You have up to three minutes. Please identify yourself by name and your address.
How's everybody doing? I'm Dee Jones. I stay at 967 Temerack Avenue. First of all, I want to say thankful to be alive. Sorry, I don't see the time. But I'm thankful to be alive. I'm just happy to be alive, to give back to Kent County, to be able to see lands today. I've really done some cool things with esports, getting them to invest in esports and really seeing the economic impact that it can have on our library district, but also Kent County itself, and also the patrons. Also, cool, like seeing the colleges, a lot of colleges and universities have actually came to KDL and hosted esports competitions. I've been able to bring my nephew to KDL to actually have him compete against other kids at different library districts, some of you guys' districts too, so it's pretty cool to see that. And also knowing that they hosted a game design competition on Fortnite, and 200 kids across the globe competed on that, and I look forward to working with Dill to get Fortnite there too. So a lot of cool things that I've did, and some of that work actually helped me get recognized by Forbes for games, where I was, I am one of the finalists and nominees for Forbes 30 Under 30, but I also got asked to be on the Forbes Business Council, and I'm very excited about that too. I know I'm a natural leader. I was born to be a pioneer and to do positive innovative things and to change society and stay true to who I am, be authentic 100% and just be Dee Jones. And so I've been able to come across a lot of powerful people, speak to a lot of powerful people, but I like to step in my own power and know that I'm powerful too, and that I'm going to be a powerful global business leader one day. I'm going to do cool things for society. I've already done cool things for society. I've seen that Microsoft actually bought 300 acres. I actually was on Microsoft two times for when I brought, done my esports competitions for them around here, so I'm pretty sophisticated. I know what I can do. I've been on the big platforms before the big companies bought acres of land around here, so I think the future of innovation in Kent County and the right place are actually trying to, you know, have part of our workforce be at least 10% of people working in the tech space. I really read a lot of articles, and I think I'm going to be on Cranes 200 Powerful one day. I think I'm already influential. I think I can give a lot of people a run, influence of what I've done across Kent County, for sure. But hey, I'm on the Forbes, I'm doing a lot of cool things, and I've got asked to be on the Forbes Business Council, so I'll take that over Cranes, and that's no shade. And so I'm just very thankful to be able to do what I'm doing continuously, to be innovative, continue to pioneer, to continuously do cool things. I also got to see the Ottawa Hills esports lab that they're building before they do the ribbon cutting, so I got to check out our underperforming school districts labs. And I just look forward to innovative and being cool and just pioneering and just putting the city on, because I've done it. I am the pioneer that put us on. Thank you. The county, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on in again.
Good morning again. I'm still Daniel Scut, and I still live in Kent County. Let me be clear again, I am neither a Republican or a Democrat. I vote according to the Holy Scriptures, God's word, the Christian Bible. All elections are important, and of course, less than two weeks from now will be some more. All elections are spiritual, because they affect every part of our life, including our spiritual lives. I'm sure many of you have voted already, but for those of you that haven't, here or listening to my voice in some other way, I would encourage you again not to vote for anyone who supports murder of children in the womb. If they win their election and they begin to push their agenda, according to Scripture, you will be accomplice to murder. That's what God says, that's not my words. If you're a politician and you're running for reelection or election to a higher office, I would warn you as well. If you push that agenda and it has passed, according to God's word, you will be accomplice to murder. Keep in mind your ults if you take an oath soon. You are swearing to the Constitution, which promises the same rights you and I have to what the Constitution says, posterity. And according to Webster, that means our offspring, and our offspring begins at conception. Some are predicting maybe some civil unrest, the fifth or the sixth, no matter who wins. If you believe in and practice biblical prayer, I'd encourage you to start praying now about that. There's a powerful prayer in the Scriptures. It's called the Hedge of Thorns. It was put around Job. We can pray that today around people, places, and our community. I have a copy of this prayer, if you would like one after the meeting. Also, we'll be meeting at our fellowship on Butterworth Street Fellowship, Sunday, November 3, at 10:30, to pray about, not the election necessarily, but just for peace, because I don't think any of us want riots and destruction in our city and in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else? I see no other person stepping up, so we'll move on to our administrative report.
Yes, just a couple items today. I guess I wanted to just mention for our viewers, more than anything else, when Kent County gets a grant, and in this case, like the $750,000 SAMSA grant from the federal government, it very much specifies what we can and can't do with it. So the Board of Commissioners would never be allowed to take that money and say, oh, let's not do what we told the feds we would do with it. We're going to put it somewhere else. That would be a violation of many things. So I just wanted to make sure, it's just important that the public, I think, understands more and more about how county finance works. And then also, staff is hard at work on the strategic plan. We appreciated having such a large number of commissioners participate, and so we plan to bring that, hopefully by the end of the year, to EXAC and then to the board, and a strategic communication plan will accompany that. And that's all I have for today.
All right, thank you. That brings us to reports. Does any commissioner have a report item? Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Chair. We had our KCCA quarterly governing committee meeting this past week. Things are going well for the most part. One, two things that I wanted to bring to the attention of the full board. One is a question for staff, I guess. People at KCCA mentioned that they're still having struggle finding enough contractors to do weatherization work, and one of the things they mentioned was if it would be possible for the purchasing department at the county to post projects, or to post things on the builder's exchange. I don't know if there's any restrictions around that, but they mentioned that that would really help them kind of spread the word to more contractors, so that they can have more ways to find this work. It is posted currently on the county website, but the way I see it, posting it in more places, more people can look and find them, hopefully. So hopefully that's something that we can talk in the future. And then the other thing, which was honestly troubling to myself and to Commissioner Lisa Knight, is that if I'm getting this correct, there's a food distribution program that the KCCA does. It's the, if I'm not getting this wrong again, it's the CSFP. Specifically, this is a food distribution program that is done for people who are elderly, so 60 and up. And again, if I'm not getting this wrong, they said that they, for the first time ever, or the first time ever in the history of this program, have a waitlist. And to me, knowing that there are seeing, given my experience working in a former credit union and seeing how many of our elders, their only source of income is social security, and how much that is not getting people very far, that combined with this knowledge that the, there's now a line for food distribution, and combined with the fact that the ALICE numbers, so again, asset limited, income constrained, but employed, people who have a job but who can't make ends meet, that number is also increasing, and combined with the fact the COVID money that was given out years ago is now pretty much ran out, very troubling signs indeed. And so I would encourage all of my colleagues that are here currently, those who will be here next year and moving forward, we need to do all we can to make sure that we're taking care of our constituents. Regardless of who wins this year, we have, I think, a lot of challenges ahead. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Commissioner Hennessy?
The Senior Millage Review Committee is going through a strategic planning process, and we recently met for an afternoon, and then later next week, we will be meeting for most of the day, as we begin looking at our priorities and reassessing in a global way how we're, you know, handling the senior millage money. So it's not, it's never a static program as it is, but we're taking a deep dive into it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other report? If not, I have one item, and that is, I have appointed in the past a procurement policy advisory committee and asked Commissioner Burl to chair that. That was approved by this board as a Rule 6.1 advisory committee. I apologize to the committee, I probably should have used Rule 6.0 instead of 6.1. The uniqueness of that is that as a 6.1, I have granted a 30-day extension for reporting for that committee, but I can't do it interlocutorily. I need the consent of the board to do that. So I'm asking for the consent of the board to extend that committee's reporting time to November 25. Is there a motion to consent?
No motion.
It has moved and supported any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Burl, thanks you. All right. No other reports, we'll move to miscellaneous. Is there any miscellaneous items? Let's start on this side, ooh, everybody. Commissioner Baker?
Just last week, I had been invited earlier in the year to host a luncheon, a fundraising luncheon, a table, fundraising lunch for the Healthy Homes Coalition, and Commissioners Oliver King, Legrand, and also Administrator Vanderberg were there, so I want to appreciate that. But what was really great was how many people from the county were at this event, and so it was very clear that, especially around the issue of lead and lead paint removal, the county is very engaged, including the chair of that organization, Brian Hardell, from the Health Department. So I was just very impressed to see that the county was very much engaged in this work.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver King? Did, no. Mr. Dorr?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank Administrator Vanderberg and Chair Steck, and as well as Commissioner Legrand. For last week, my college students came and got a little bit of a tour of the county building, and Administrator Vanderberg and Chair Steck were involved in sharing a little bit about county government and teaching them that, and Commissioner Legrand will be talking this afternoon to them. So I just wanted to thank you so much for the experience that they got to have, and they greatly appreciated being here last week, so thank you.
Thank you. It was fun. All right, anyone else? Miscellaneous? Mr. Dorr?
Hey, thank you, Chair. Al, you mentioned the grant process, which is totally accurate. The one thing I want to remind people, though, you know, during this entire ARPA, and unemployment, free-for-all with all the monopoly money floating around, there was a ton of fraud, and the state and the feds recognized it, and they said, there's nothing we can do about it. It was so overwhelming. So they issued amnesty for a lot of recipients that were blatantly, premeditatedly gaming that whole system. They gave them amnesty. And so we always got to keep our eye on that money coming in from the federal government, whatever they call it, you know, American Rescue, or unemployment, whatever it is, because that was a great example of how screwed up the government can be with other people's money. It wasn't even other people's money, it was monopoly money that they created. So that's my only point to that. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Miscellaneous? Commissioner? All right. Anyone else? Miscellaneous? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Just really quickly, I want to encourage all of our fellow citizens to go out and vote. Uh, early voting starts this weekend, if I'm not mistaken. Um, I still haven't decided if I'm going early voting or the day of. Um, but regardless of how you vote and who you vote for, what matters is showing up. Um, and then secondly, I just want to invite you all to the Roseville Park neighborhood this weekend. Uh, on Sunday specifically, we will be celebrating Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead. This is a Mexican holiday specifically that we celebrate every year to think about and remember those of our, uh, our loved ones and friends and family members who have passed on. So hopefully you all can make some time to stop by. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair. I know we've all tried to cut down on the sports accolades, but if you let me, if you'll indulge me, we have a, um, the Northview High School football team is undefeated, 7-0, conference champions for the first time since 1970. So unlike our commissioner, former Commissioner Representative Skaggs's East Polo team winning every single year, uh, this is a big deal for Northview and, um, all right, well, big deal for Northview, and, um, congratulations to the kids, student athletes, the coaches. Um, awesome accomplishment. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Any other miscellaneous? If not, just, uh, I, I just wanted to pass one comment on to, to all of you. Uh, this, many of you are out there knocking doors and campaigning, as I have. Um, and I'm struck by one of the things I hear repeatedly is sort of this, this, this desire for stability in the political process. Um, and that's driven by a perception that there isn't stability. And I, I frequently remind them that I think we do have models for stability, and this is one of them. So I would encourage you to be the leaders in demonstrating stability as we go through what is likely to be a tumultuous election process. So please lead on that. All right. With that, I have nothing else, so I will call on Vice Chair Green for one last motion.
Thank you, Chair. Steck, I move to adjourn, subject to the call to Chair to Thursday, November 7th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m.
All those who support, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you all. We are adjourned.